At 7:00 PM, if you will stand and we'll do our prayer and pledge. Lord God, we pray for wisdom, for strength, for courage to do what is right and good for all citizens. May we put the interests of others above our own and act with love for the common good. May we be good neighbors, recognize your image in every person here. We thank you again for this council, our mayor, our city staff, our first responders, our hospital staff, and all those who work to make this place we call home in Fairview, such a wonderful city. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chairperson, as a point of order this evening, I would recommend the Secretary of the Board call the roll and then proceed immediately to the election of officers before any new business.
Okay.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. Dawson?
Present.
Ms. Schilling?
Here.
Mayor Anderson?
Present.
Ms. Shulis?
Here.
Mr. Ritt?
Here.
Mr. Calley?
Here.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Present.
Mr. Pape?
Present.
I make a nomination for Haley Shulis to be chairman.
Second.
Call the roll.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Pate?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ritt?
Aye.
Ms. Shulis?
Obstained.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Calley?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
All right, do we have any nominations for vice chair?
I nominate Mr. Pape for vice chair.
I'll second.
All right, let's call the roll if there's no other commentary, okay.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Calley?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling? Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ritt?
Aye.
Ms. Shulis?
Aye.
Mr. Pate?
Obstained.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
All right, so we have our chair and vice chair. Item number four on the agenda is approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Pate?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ritt?
Aye.
Ms. Shulis?
Aye.
Mr. Calley?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda. Sure. Item number four passes 9-0. Item number five on the agenda, citizens' comments, do we have any tonight?
There's none.
All right. Item number six, approval of minutes from the June 10, 2025 regular meeting.
Motion to approve.
All right, call the roll please.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ritt?
Aye.
Ms. Shulis?
Aye.
Mr. Calley?
Aye.
Mr. Pate?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
All right, minutes are approved 9-0. Next item on the agenda, old business. Item PC Resolution, PC 2625, rezoning of Meadow View, Zero Kingswood Boulevard, MAP 42, Parcel 123. Current zoning R-20 and proposed zoning RS5. Property owner, Land South LLC. Staff, would you read your comments?
This Julie Berg, owner and applicant, is requesting approval of a rezoning from R-20, one and two family residential to RS5, single-family residential, for a 24.8 acre portion of the 75.91 acre tract of land identified as tax MAP 42, Parcel 123, located at the southern terminus of Kingwood Boulevard. The primary property to the north, the existing Kingwood residential subdivision, is zoned RS20, planned overlay district. There's an additional lot to the north that is zoned commercial general. The property to the south is the remaining 51.11 acres of this property, is not part of this rezoning. That property will retain its current zoning designation as R-20. The properties to the east and west are zoned RS40. All surrounding properties contain single-family residential land uses. The Fairview Forward 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates this tract of land as both new residential medium neighborhood on the southern portion and residential transition. The 24.8 acre portion of the tract of land requested for the rezoning is classified as residential transition. The residential transition classification notes the appropriate land uses are multifamily residential, single-family attached, single-family detached, and civic institutional. The residential transition classification lists RS15, RS8, RS5, and RM8 zone districts with a PUD overlay as appropriate zoning. Based on the requested zone district of RS5, and the owner stating the desire is to create either detached single-family residences and/or attached single-family residences, the request is in alignment with the residential transition future land use classification. The applicant provided the following reason for the rezoning request, to cluster houses and have a walking trail. Through conversations with the owner, the request to rezone the property to RS5 provides the opportunity to create smaller lots that can be grouped together within the areas of the property that are the least impacted by topography and other natural features such as streams. The topography and other environmentally sensitive areas of the property greatly reduce the area that can be developed with minimal impact on the land. Staff recommends that the planning commission provide a favorable recommendation to the Fairview Board of Commissioners to approve this request to rezone a 24.8 acre portion of property located at the southern terminus of Kingwood Boulevard, identified as tax MAP 42, Parcel 123, from the current zoning of R-20 to RS5, with the following conditions of approval included in PC Resolution 2625. The rezoning request will be placed on Thursday, September 4, Board of Commissioners meeting agenda for consideration, with the potential for the public hearing and second and final reading being held at Thursday, October 2, 2025 Board of Commissioners meeting. Tonight, this is an old business. We heard it last month, or at our last meeting in June, and it was deferred based on the 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates the southern portion of this property as residential new residential medium, which has a classification of R-20 half-acre lots or RS40 one-acre lots. The northern portion of this has since been deeded off. The applicant took the advice of the planning commission, did deed the northern piece of this property off. That's where you can see it split into tract one and tract two. Tract one on the screen would be the portion that is being requested to be zoned RS5. With that, the applicant is here tonight to speak on the project if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ethan. Would the applicant like to come forward and make any comments, give any feedback?
Ms. Shulis, did we have a motion?
Give us just a second. I apologize, it's my fault. Is there a motion to approve this item for discussion? All right, to keep things rolling, I make a motion to approve this item for discussion.
As a point of order, Madam Chairman, I think if you just move to approve the item in a second, then that opens discussion. And just because you moved to approve an item doesn't mean you're bound to vote on it. If you second it, you don't have to vote on it. Discussion may change your mind, but just as general practice, move to approve will get the floor open for discussion. So if someone wants to make that motion.
Second.
All right, thank you. Could you say your name and address for those watching virtually?
Yes, ma'am. Julie Berg, 1250 Old Hillsborough Road, Franklin, Tennessee, 37069.
Thank you. And is there any feedback or insight you want to offer of the changes that were made from the last time that you were here?
I could not say it better than Ethan said it, and I did quit claim the other part off. And I'm just asking to rezone it for RS5. I was going to have my representative from Kim Lee Horn speak to you, but he was caught out of town on short notice, so I hope this is pretty simple and...
Sure.
Little houses clustered, walking trails, open space.
Mrs. Shulis, just, may I speak for a second?
Yeah.
Just have a question for city staff again. So just to make sure once again, so that tract, tract one that we're talking about, does meet the 2040 Comprehensive Plan in the zoning? That is correct. It does meet the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Sure.
Mr. Greer, I'm looking at zoning regulation section 6-110. I'm just curious what your interpretation of that would be. Purpose and intent of RS5, single-family residential. About halfway through the opening paragraph, it says, "Any RS5 district shall in all instances be overlaid by a planned overlay district and shall only be located within the town center overlay district."
That's correct. It does state that. The kind of viewpoint that I take on this is following the 2040 Plan. It shows kind of a transition through that area of town. If you look at the entirety of the map, it shows not only the parcel that city center is located on, it shows the parcel directly beside that, kind of designated as city center as well. Looking at this, I think it is close enough based on the guidance and professional planning advice that I've received. You have a step down in density, so you're going from city center core. You have townhomes already located on that side of Highway 100 with the Cedar Crest development there to the north. You have townhomes located to the southwest with the Chester Road Townhomes development. This is a small lot RS5 development. But looking at it from the entirety, the holistic view of the picture, you're stepping down from high-density commercial up along Fairview Boulevard, stepping down to smaller lots with townhome developments into small, single-family lots, which is what would be proposed with this. Eventually going to the southern piece there with one-acre lots or to the Kingwood development with larger lots. And so it does kind of meet the transect of going from high-density along Highway 100 and then spreading out.
I know that we are not, this is not at the point where we are to understand how many homes can, will be part of this development, but do you know yet how many you can fit on there?
I had Kim Lee Horn do a drawing, and I think I've submitted it to Ethan's office, and it's just 91 cottage-style homes. They're very nice and there's a lot of green space.
Ms. Chair.
Sure.
I could be misremembering this property, but a while back, we looked at a development where they come out of the backside of Kingwood. Just looking at this, I just want to make sure there is the option that you could access this property through the Cedar Crest, which is at the property directly northwest. Is that right, Ethan? You can't, I mean, I see that they kind of have that connector over there to the backside of Kingwood. I mean, it definitely makes more sense that the main entrance to this property would be through the Cedar Crest rather than Kingwood.
The, so this property, Ms. Berg is the owner of this property. She had previously been under contract with another developer who had brought a plan in. You have seen this before. They had a plan that was, for the sake of the graphic that's on the screen, that filled tract one and tract two. Fire and life safety have a large concern with ensuring that there is a connection point to the Kingwood subdivision. Kingwood subdivision is currently out of compliance with fire code due to the amount of homes on a single point of access. It is over 30, and those homes are not sprinkled. So having a secondary point of access for the fire department is a critical point that they will push as this, if this goes forward into a development plan. Clearly, having that access point through Cedar Crest would be a significant advantage for, not only for the development and traffic, but also that would be the primary access point for water and sewer connectivity into this development as well.
Got it, thank you. I just wanted to make sure there was the option at least to connect there. It sounds like that's going to be a mandatory requirement, so thank you.
Mr. Greer, you may have already, it sounds like you just answered this, but it sounds like Water Authority has given the approval for TAPS to do water and sewer here and not something different.
Speaking with Mr. Rogers currently, and Michael Rogers with Water Authority of Dixon County would much, be much better to speak on this. But currently, the plan is for that property to receive water and conventional sewer.
Is there a max on how many that property would be allowed?
Give me one moment. Let me see if I can pull up the availability letter.
I'm only proposing 91 homes, and I have a sewer availability letter from the Water Authority of Dixon for 137.
Sure.
Oh, Ethan's, I'm sorry, why, Mr. Greer is looking into that? I just want to go back. I know the 2040 Plan is a, is a guide, right? We use it for direction on long-term planning to keep some sort of consistency amongst developments as they grow or as the city grows. Our regulations are pretty black and white, and just the fact that, in my mind, RS5 is just such a dense zoning that... I understand you've got the plans that you have, but as you just stated, what did it was 137 that they gave you approval up to?
That was for the whole entire property. I'm not using that.
Right, but they gave you that approval, correct?
I'm not going to use it.
The approval was for...
I had Kim Lee Horn...
The approval was for 127 single-family residences, was the Water Authority's letter for service.
Thank you.
Just to, I guess just the concern of mine is that intentions are always great, but things change as we've learned multiple times over the recent past and long-term past, that we just should be careful in putting RS5 into a location that, I know the applicant is not desiring to build that many, but it opens that up to a possibility. Yeah.
Ms. Berg, the concern is that if you rezone it and then walk away to sell it, someone else could come in and build up to 127 homes and not the 91 that you're saying you would want to build. And we, we've, this commission has been burned in the past on approving based on what someone has promised and then come back and sold the land to someone else who then builds more homes.
This makes any difference? I've owned the property since 2011. I don't, I'm not in the business of flipping land. I'm not in the business of developing land. I tentatively have a contract for the 91 homes from a very well-known builder in the area. I learned the, I learned the hard way and by... Meritage did, I don't know what they did, but it was nuts. And I think everybody remembers that, but that's not me. And so I didn't have anything to do with that, and it was not able to be built anyway. This has been, this, this is, I've had several, several people look at this, and the way the land lays and what we're doing with clustering the homes and leaving open space and walking trails, it'll be much... It'll be a very nice place to live. It's not going to be a clustered, clustered townhomes or apartments with a parking lot. It's going to be nice. It's going to improve the area, and it's going to increase your tax base. That's all I know to say. I haven't misled anyone, so please don't judge me by somebody else, what somebody else did.
Sure. Be that as it may, it's still, it's still a possibility for anyone despite best intentions. So it's always a concern of ours.
Madam Chair, can I add two points of information just for the broader board and the new members? The first is, this item, the, and the annexations that are on the agenda today, they're all recommendations. This is not a final decision from this body. They're recommendations to the Board of Commissioners who will have a final approval. And then the second piece is exactly what Mr. McDonald already said. The future, there's a whole lot of steps that happen after this, and none of those preliminary plans are binding. What's binding is the zoning, and so they have a zoning right at that point. There's, there'll be many more approvals for master development plans, final plats, all that sort of thing. So at this point, the board should really be concerned with what is the zoning? How much can or can't be built based on topography or water requirements? It's all kind of further down the road, so.
Understood, thank you. Mr. Greer, remind me, you said this was not part of a planned overlay district, correct?
That's correct. It is not within a, the town center planned overlay district. This property was originally part of the Kingwood original pod. And so I was actually, since we have a wonderful meeting tomorrow night that I invite all of you to attend about our new development code, I was pulling up what the future zoning map in there that everyone will get to see tomorrow has. And it actually has, that this property remains part of the original PUD, and the properties to the west go into four units per acre is the maximum density with that. And so if you look at four units per acre, Curtis helped me out with numbers. An acre is how many square feet? Forty-three, five-sixty. So you're looking more at like a RS8 product. Or that.
So it is part of the Kingwood PUD, is what you're saying?
This property currently, as it stands today, is part of the Kingwood pod.
And it would be, it would have to adhere to those?
It would have to continue to adhere to that. Those pod regulations that were passed a long, long time ago. They only ever built the first two phases out of five phases of Kingwood.
Quick question. Current zoning is R-20, but has a overlay district, correct?
Has a pod overlay. Yes. Planned overlay district, planned unit development. However you want to call it, pod, PUD, it is all there.
Madam Chairman, I've got a question for staff. It, or maybe even city attorney in this one. Because, so it's currently RS20 pod, but if we change the zoning, doesn't that put the whole pod away and make this straight zoning to RS5 the way it's proposed right now?
The tract that is highlighted in blue listed as tract one would be zoned RS5 with a straight zoned piece of property. The remaining Kingwood would still fall within its original property rights.
So any of the regulations in the pod go away if we were, if this were to be approved?
Correct. We've had this conversation a few different times with how this project has come along. At one point in the past, a landowner of this property sold a piece of this. And so for this property to get developed, there are a couple of options for the current landowner to choose. It's either to amend the pod, which goes back through the original process of pod approval, gives it its own characteristics, its own rules and regulations, or they can come in and choose to straighten zone the property. And they have come in to straighten zone the property to not have to do a new pod smittle.
This is, I'll admit it, it's very confusing to me. And there is another alternative called a conservation subdivision, but it requires so much paperwork, and I printed it off, and it's about that thick. If you print it off, and it can be done, and it will end up in the same result of what Kim Lee Horn has drawn for me, the 91, 91 single-family home sites. So I can suffer and go through that, and I guess I can. And I thought that the, the Kingwood PUD was out of date. I'd been told several times several years ago that it was, it expired. That PUD was gone. So I, as I understand it, I'm left with the RS5, which is pretty straightforward, and I believe you have all the, I have all the paperwork done for that. Or in the alternative, a conservation subdivision, which requires a lot more paperwork, but it is the same end result. So it's not easy. I don't do this professionally. I've held it for years. It'll improve the town of Fairview, I believe. That's all I know. That's all I know.
Any further comments, questions from the board?
I would just like to note one thing. Mr. Chestin and I were speaking about your comment about the regulations with RS5 having to be developed in accordance with a planned overlay district. So looking at that, it's kind of a catch-22 with how that's written. So if it wasn't RS5 and it was developed as a planned overlay district, our regulations allow for those lot sizes to be 50% of the required lot size. So you would inadvertently be getting a 2,500-square-foot lot versus a 5,000-square-foot lot. Both are small. One is smaller, but both are very small. So just for kind of looking at it, how we... After you asked that question, it clicked our brains of what we were talking about before. You know, I would rather have a 5,000-square-foot lot than a 2,500-square-foot lot. And then we also do have, on the other side of City Center, along Wiley Circle, is the only other area in Fairview that has RS5. On the Phase 3 of Western Woods is the only other RS5. And I know that we have had some challenges with particularly the driveway links, I believe, along Wiley Circle, and that has come up several times in discussion in here with different projects. So just a reminder of what we have going on around the city.
The primary access for this piece of property would be through Kingwood. And I know there's like a little hitch there. Is that intended to be another connection?
That is intended to be a connection. The... That is the legal access point to this property today. So the connection through Cedar Crest is a stubbed-out public street all the way to the property line as a dedicated public right-of-way, but the physical access point today to this property is through Kingwood.
Doesn't connect to Chester?
This does not connect to Chester. It does not connect to any other roads other than the future of Cedar Crest and the existing Kingwood subdivision.
Is that Cedar Crest connection hypothetical? I mean, is that...
It exists today. It is installed. But yes, I mean, it is a... The city does not own that street yet. It is slated to be accepted as public infrastructure.
I just wasn't sure if there was official approvals of that would be.
Because of the distance of travel, would there... Do these homes have to be sprinkled?
If they have... If they have more than one point of access, then they do not have to be sprinkled. If they only have one point of access, they would be required to be sprinkled by fire
Madam Chair. Mr. Greer, so if there were to be a development here that connected Cedar Crest to Kingwood, would that then get Kingwood into compliance with the fire code, since there would be two means of access?
That is correct, Mr. King.
Any other... Ms. Berg?
There are two other points of access that I believe I can avail myself of. And so I... There's access. There's a lot of land out there, and there's Highway 100 and there's Boone Street, so...
Sure. Any other questions, comments? All right, call a vote.
Ms. Shulis?
No.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling? Mr. Ritt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Calley?
No.
Mr. Pape?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Right. Motion passes six-three. All right. Moving on to new business. Item A under new business number eight... I'm sorry, we skipped A and B. We did those first. So item C, PC Resolution, PC 2725, Annexation, 111.66 acres, MAP 70, Parcel 5.01, Current Zoning, Unincorporated Williamson County, MGA 1 and RP 5. Property Owner, Carl Walker. Staff comments, please.
Mr. Rob Mulchon with SEC has submitted on behalf of the property owner an annexation request for property located south of Fairview Boulevard, Highway 100, and west of Pinewood Road. The parcel is more specifically identified as Tax MAP 70, Parcel 5.01. Property contains a total of 111.66 acres. The parcel is located within the urban growth boundary of the City of Fairview. The parcel is contiguous to the current Fairview Municipal Boundaries due to the municipal boundaries incorporating Fairview Boulevard right-of-way along the property frontage. The property is classified in the Fairview Forward 2040 Plan as Interchange Business Employment District. This future land use classification notes appropriate land uses as retail, restaurant, office, light industrial, industrial, multifamily residential, and civic institutional. The Business Interchange Future Land Use Classification lists seven zone districts as appropriate. These zone districts are commercial interchange, commercial community, commercial mixed-use, office, general, industrial, restrictive, industrial, general, and industrial special. The application stated in the annex... The applicant stated in the annexation application that water will be provided by Water Authority of Dixon County. Sanitary sewer will be via step to be built by the developer and then turned over to Water Authority of Dixon County to own and maintain the system. The applicant provided the following description for the annexation and potential development. The application is to request annexation and to rezone this property to RS10 to develop a single-family detached residential subdivision. Tonight, we are only addressing the annexation piece of this application. At our next meeting in September, we will discuss the rezoning piece of this. Staff recommends the Planning Commission provide a favorable recommendation to the Fairview Board of Commissioners to approve this request to Annex Tax MAP 70, Parcel 005.01, located south of Fairview Boulevard, with the conditions of approval included in PC 2725. This annexation request will be placed on the Thursday, September 4th, Board of Commissioners' meeting agenda for consideration, with the potential for the public hearing and the second reading being held on Thursday, October 2nd, Board of Commissioners' meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there anyone who would like to speak? If you could state your name and address, please?
Rob Mulchon, SEC, 850 Middle Tennessee Boulevard, Murfreesboro, Tennessee. Good evening. Thank you all for your consideration of this matter tonight. My client is looking to annex this property into the city. We will be getting water and sewer provided through Dixon County Water Authority on that side. The companion rezoning that will be heard next month on that side, we're requesting at that point in time, which is not a consideration tonight, is RS10 for us to construct a single-family detached subdivision for residential lots of 10,000 or greater on that side. So that's really what the application's for on that side.
Any questions, comments?
Yeah, Madam Chairman. This is for staff more so. So because the zoning will come second, this will be annexed in. If a zoning change is not made, it'll come in as R40, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Our regulations, Mr. Pape, state that a property that is newly annexed into the planning district comes in as RS40, and then the Planning Commission provides a recommendation for the zoning within 30 days of it being annexed. So that's the... I know previously we used to rezone properties as they were getting annexed coming in. We have a slightly different interpretation than previous City of Fairview staff members, and so that's where that derivative comes from, having the rezoning being held on a
Chairman?
Chair.
We've been annexing a lot of property over this past year, and it seems like we're having trouble just digesting the property we have in town. The traffic is terrible out there. All these homes are still going up, and it's only going to get worse. This property that's up for annexation tonight looks like perfect property for industrial and stores and stuff like that, light industrial and some stores, which this town is really I know he could do whatever he wants with the property, but it's not part of the city yet. I think we should slow down on annexation just a little bit and so we can eat what we have. That's my thought.
Chairman? A quick question from the staff. Is this property... Is the western part of this property, is that bordering Hickman County?
That is correct, Mr. King. This property sits at the western border of Williamson County. It does border Hickman County. As you can see in the map on the screen, 840 and the 100 intersection is located just to the east of this property.
So does that mean that that is the western edge of our urban growth boundary as well?
That's correct.
Are the properties highlighted in red, are those all in the county?
All of those properties are in the county. The one that is slightly darker gray along 840 is a city-controlled property.
What about the orange property in the orange?
The orange property on the north side is currently in the city, and it is zoned commercial mixed-use.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Greer, question. Mr. Calley, I would agree with you about wanting industrial and commercial there, but, Mr. Greer, I believe that our lack of sewer capacity at those locations does not allow for a lot of...
There's currently no sewer that extends to this area of Fairview.
So we would have to put in a new pump station or extend sewer in some way?
Water Authority of Dixon County would have to extend their sewer lines significantly to get sewer access to this point.
To support a commercial or industrial build.
Correct. The step systems are not the best method for commercial and industrial buildings. They definitely work much better utilizing residential water use.
Thank you.
Mr. Greer? Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Can I call for a minute? We've got water pouring out of that light fixture right there, which is a little concerning to me. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt the meeting, but is that like a...
Ms. Shulis, can we take a recess for...
Take a five-minute recess.
Ms. Berg, could you and your sons maybe move forward? I'm afraid that if that were to bust, it might hit you. I'm afraid that if that were to bust, it might hit you.
Ms. Chair?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Can I call for a minute? We've got water pouring out of that light fixture right there, which is a little concerning to me. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt the meeting, but is that like a...
Ms. Schulist, can we take a recess for...
Take a five-minute recess.
I don't know, but I'm concerned that it's going to bust, and then we... Ms. Berg, could you and your sons maybe move forward? I'm afraid that if that were to bust, it might hit you.
Ms. Chair?
I'm Frank Walker. I am one of the property owners. I think this will be a great thing for Fairview. For one thing, it's outside of Fairview right now, and the only way to get this in here is to annex it. I don't want to annex it because I have to pay property taxes, but because we're developing it, having it developed, I want to bring it in so it's easier to develop, because right now it's in the county. Now, it's a bittersweet thing. It's been in my family for over 100 years, and it's been hard on us to decide how to do this, but we think it's best to sell it as a development. As the owners, I'd rather see development there. But I think because the corridor we have, we have 840 going to 40, and then also going to 65, people will be going to work those directions. So the plus would be people coming to shop, so they don't have to pass through Fairview to come home. And that way, you get the benefit of people shopping there and not the crowded congestion. So there's a plus. But the only way to get this into Fairview is to annex it. Can't be forced. But there is, for industrial, there's no sewer. They tried to put sewer in in Bon Aqua with the, the Lick Creek thing stopped it, so that's not going to happen. Unless somebody with big money comes in and develops it. And I don't know if it's going to happen in my lifetime or your lifetime. It's been a long time we've been trying to do something with this property. So I think the best thing that I think Fairview's going to gain from it, nothing but a plus. I think it's exciting to have something develop here in this area, and then once they come in, other people are going to say, wow, look what's going in. Let's look at the properties over in that area. Maybe we should be buying it up and putting things in there. Maybe a grocery store or some other, you know, like gas stations and who knows? Maybe a hotel. But it's not going to happen until you move it into Fairview. Any questions?
Ms. Chair?
Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Walker. I sat on the Board for the Urban Growth Boundary. We took a look at our overall area and chose for this piece of property to be possibly a part of our city. I believe that it will be a great addition to our city, and it's in a great location because it's on the outskirts and has wonderful access to 840 and Highway 100, and not in the center of town so much that, you know, this part where people come to our community, it's just a good place for us to have families and extend to that area. So I just believe this would be a good addition to Fairview, and it also, with it meeting the urban growth boundary, I think it's, you know, a good decision. Thank you.
Chairman?
Chair.
I think it's a good decision, too. I'm just saying this might not be the right time for it. And also, you know, yeah, I'm looking for light industrial or whatever, something different, something where people in this town can go to work. Because if you put an RS-10 on 111 acres, that's a heck of a lot of homes, and when those people go shopping, yeah, they're going to come to, into here, and that traffic on 100 is going to be torrential and terrible. But, you know, we'll see what happens.
Madam Chairman, I have a question for staff. Did Dixon County Water and Sewer Authority provide a sewer letter for this? Because there's, I'm hearing kind of both things, that there is sewer, but there's not sewer, there's not sewer for commercial, but there is for residential potentially, which is not consistent with the 2040 plan.
So for Water Authority, they provided a letter that stated it would have to be a step system for a onsite wastewater treatment, and that water could be made available to this site.
So the reality is it doesn't have sewer, and when we try to be objective and say, does this meet all the standards, it theoretically doesn't have sewer, so that is a potential reason to not bring it in at this point. So, thanks.
There are no further comments, questions? We can call a vote. Okay. Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ritt?
Aye.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
No.
Mr. Pape?
No.
Mr. King?
No.
All right, motion passes 6-3. All right. Next item, 8. D. Annex, PC Resolution, PC 2825, annexation of 10.07 acres, MAP 46, parcel 54.02. Current zoning is unincorporated Williamson County, MGA 1. Property owner, Deborah Jones. The staff could read their report, please.
Mr. Rob Mulchen with SEC has submitted on behalf of the property owner an annexation request for property located south of Old Franklin Road and east of Nottingham Drive. The parcel is more specifically identified as TaxMAP 46, parcel 54.02. The property contains a total of 10.07 acres and is currently zoned MGA 1 within Williamson County. The parcel is located within the urban growth boundary of the City of Fairview. Additionally, the parcel is contiguous to the current Fairview municipal boundaries due to the property to the south. TaxMAP 46, parcel 50, being located within the municipal boundaries of the City of Fairview. The parcel located to the north across Old Franklin Road is located within Williamson County and zoned MGA 1. For those of you unfamiliar with, Williamson County zoning, MGA 1, means that you can build one home per one acre. The parcels to the east and west are also located within Williamson County, and both are zoned MGA 1. The parcel to the south is located within the municipal boundaries of Fairview and is zoned RS-40. All surrounding properties contain single-family detached residential land uses. The Fairview Forward 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates the property identified as TaxMAP 46, parcel 54.02, as Legacy Residential Medium. The Legacy Residential Medium classification notes that only appropriate land use is single-family detached residential. The Legacy Residential Medium classification lists two zone districts as appropriate. The two zone districts are R-20 and RS-40. The proposed land use is single-family detached residential is in alignment with the Fairview Forward 2040 Comprehensive Plan. The applicant has noted on the application, a rezoning request to R-20 is also going to be made for this property. The requested zone district of R-20 is also in alignment with the Fairview Forward 2040 Plan. The applicant stated in the annexation application that water will be provided by Water Authority of Dixon County via existing water and sewer, via existing water and sewer lines located along Old Franklin Road. The applicant provided the following description for the annexation and potential development. The application is to request annexation and to rezone this property to R-20 to develop a single-family detached residential subdivision. The rezoning to R-20 will allow for single-family detached homes with minimum lot sizes of 20,000 square feet. Staff recommends the Planning Commission provide a favorable recommendation to the Fairview Board of Commissioners to approve this request to annex TaxMAP 46, parcel 054.02, located south of Old Franklin Road and east of Nottingham Drive, as indicated on the attached map, and with the following conditions of approval. This annexation request will be placed on Thursday, September 4th, Board of Commissioners' meeting agenda for consideration, with the potential for the public hearing and second reading being held on Thursday, October 2nd, Board of Commissioners' meeting.
Take a motion to approve PC 2825?
Second.
Pape? Is that right? All right, do we have anybody that would like to speak to this project? If you state your name and address, please.
Rob Mulchen, SEC, 850 Middle Tennessee Boulevard, Murfreesboro, Tennessee. This is a very rather small piece of property. We're asking for the annexation, roughly a little over 10 acres, with the companion ...
With it is part of Williamson County.
If you could state your name and address, please.
Frank Walker. I am one of the property owners. I think this will be a great thing for Fairview. For one thing, it's outside of Fairview right now, and the only way to get this in here is to annex it. I don't want to annex it because I have to pay property taxes, but because we're developing it, having it developed, I want to bring it in so it's easier to develop because right now it's in the county. Now, it's a bittersweet thing. It's been in my family for over 100 years, and it's been hard on us to decide how to do this, but we think it's best to sell it as a development. As the owners, I'd rather see development there. But I think because the corridor we have, we have 840 going to 40 and then also going to 65, people will be going to work those directions. So the plus would be people coming to shop, so they don't have to pass through Fairview to come home. And that way you get the benefit of people shopping there and not the crowded congestion. So there's a plus. But the only way to get this into Fairview is to annex it. Can't be forced. But for industrial, there's no sewer. They tried to put sewer in in Bon Aqua with the Lake Creek thing stopped it, so that's not going to happen. Unless somebody with big money comes in and develops it. And I don't know if it's going to happen in my lifetime or your lifetime. It's been a long time we've been trying to do something with this property. So I think the best thing that I think Fairview is going to gain from it, nothing but a plus. I think it's exciting to have something develop here in this area. And then, once they come in, other people are going to say, wow, look what's going in. Let's look at the properties over in that area. Maybe we should be buying it up and putting things in there. Maybe a grocery store or some other, you know, like gas stations and who knows? I know maybe a hotel. But it's not going to happen until you move it into Fairview. Any questions?
Ms. Chair.
Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. I sat on the Board for the Urban Growth Boundary. We took a look at our overall area and chose for this piece of property to be possibly a part of our city. I believe that it will be a great addition to our city, and it's in a great location because it's on the outskirts and has wonderful access to 840 and Highway 100 and not in the center of town so much that, you know, this part where people come to our community, it's just a good place for us to have families and extend to that area. So I just believe this would be a good addition to Fairview, and it also with it meeting the urban growth boundary, I think it's, you know, a good decision. Thank you.
Chairman.
Chair.
Yeah, I think it's a good decision, too. I'm just saying this might not be the right time for it. And also, you know, yeah, I'm looking for light industrial or whatever, something different, something where people in this town can go to work. Because if you put an RS 10 on 111 acres, that's a heck of a lot of homes. And when those people go shopping, yeah, they're going to come to into here, and that traffic on 100 is going to be torrential and terrible. But, you know, we'll see what happens.
Madam Chairman, I have a question for staff. Did Dixon County Water and Sewer Authority provide a sewer letter for this? Because I'm hearing kind of both things, that there is sewer, but there's not sewer. There's not sewer for commercial, but there is for residential potentially, which is not consistent with the 2040 plan.
So for Water Authority, they provided a letter that stated it would have to be a step system for a onsite wastewater treatment, and that water could be made available to this site.
So the reality is it doesn't have sewer. And when we try to be objective and say, does this meet all the standards? It theoretically doesn't have sewer, so that is a potential reason to not bring it in at this point. So, thanks.
There are no further comments, questions, we can call a vote. Okay.
Vice Mayor McDonald.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Ms. Schilling.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Ritt.
Aye.
Ms. Shulis.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
No.
Mr. Pate.
No.
Mr. King.
No.
All right, motion passes six three. All right. Next item, eight point D. Annex, PC Resolution, PC 2825, annexation of 10.07 acres, map 46, parcel 54.02. Current zoning is unincorporated Williamson County, MGA 1. Property owner, Deborah Jones. The staff could read their report, please.
Mr. Rob Mulchen with SEC has submitted on behalf of the property owner an annexation request for property located south of Old Franklin Road and east of Nottingham Drive. The parcel is more specifically identified as tax map 46, parcel 54.02. The property contains a total of 10.07 acres and is currently zoned MGA 1 within Williamson County. The parcel is located within the urban growth boundary of the city of Fairview. Additionally, the parcel is contiguous to the current Fairview municipal boundaries due to the property to the south. Tax map 46, parcel 50, being located within the municipal boundaries of the city of Fairview. The parcel located to the north across Old Franklin Road is located within Williamson County and zoned MGA 1. For those of you unfamiliar with Williamson County zoning, MGA 1 means that you can build one home per one acre. The parcels to the east and west are also located within Williamson County, and both are zoned MGA 1. The parcel to the south is located within the municipal boundaries of Fairview and is zoned RS 40. All surrounding properties contain single-family detached residential land uses. The Fairview Forward 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates the property identified as tax map 46, parcel 54.02 as Legacy Residential Medium. The Legacy Residential Medium Classification notes the only appropriate land use is single-family detached residential. The Legacy Residential Medium Classification lists two zone districts as appropriate. The two zone districts are R 20 and RS 40. The proposed land use is a single-family detached residential is in alignment with the Fairview Forward 2040 Comprehensive Plan. The applicant has noted on the application, a rezoning request to R 20 is also going to be made for this property. The requested zone district of R 20 is also in alignment with the Fairview Forward 2040 Plan. The applicant stated in the annexation application that water will be provided by Water Authority of Dixon County via existing water and sewer lines located along Old Franklin Road. The applicant provided the following description for the annexation and potential development. The application is to request annexation and to rezone this property to R 20 to develop a single-family detached residential subdivision. The rezoning to R 20 will allow for single-family detached homes with minimum lot sizes of 20,000 square feet. Staff recommends the Planning Commission provide a favorable recommendation to the Fairview Board of Commissioners to approve this request to annex tax map 46, parcel 054.02, located south of Old Franklin Road and east of Nottingham Drive, as indicated on the attached map, and with the following conditions of approval. This annexation request will be placed on Thursday, September 4th, Board of Commissioners' meeting agenda for consideration, with the potential for the public hearing and second reading being held on Thursday, October 2nd, Board of Commissioners' meeting.
Make a motion to approve PC 2825.
Second.
Pate? Is that right? All right, do we have anybody that would like to speak to this project? If you state your name and address, please.
Rob Mulchen, SEC, 850 Middle Tennessee Boulevard, Murfreesboro, Tennessee. This is a very rather small piece of property. We're asking for the annexation, roughly a little over 10 acres, with the companion zoning requests coming forward in the future as RS 20, sorry, R 20. So you'd be looking at a very minimum amount of lots we can get on this of that size. We're looking probably about six or seven lots to go on this property once we get through the annexation and zoning process on that side. So being conducive with what the land use plan, we would hope for a favorable recommendation to Board of Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments, concerns? All right, hearing none, let's call the vote, if you will, Ms. Howell.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Pate.
Aye.
Ms. Schilling.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Ritt.
Aye.
Ms. Shulis.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
All right, motion passes nine zero. All right, next item on the agenda, item eight point E. PC Resolution, PC 2925. Final plat, 7303 Lake Road, 3.94 acres, map 22, parcel 179. Current zoning RS 40. Property owner, Kimberly Rose. Mr. Greer, if you will, read the staff report.
Mr. Eric Olson with Anderson Delk Epsom Associates has submitted a final plat to subdivide this 3.94 acres located at 7303 Lake Road, which is currently zoned RSM 40. Currently has two mobile homes located on the property. They submitted the final plat to propose to subdivide the existing parcel into three lots, ranging in size from 1.225 acres to 1.376 acres. To access these three lots, a single shared driveway is proposed. The shared access will provide access to Lake Road and will extend into the middle portion of the parcel to provide access to all three proposed lots. The ingress egress easement is 50 feet in width and is also a public utility easement, and it will be constructed to city street standards. All surrounding properties are located within the municipal boundaries of Fairview and contain single-family residential land uses. The properties to the south and west are zoned RSM 40. The property to the east is zoned RS 40. The Fairview Forward 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates the property at 7303 Lake Road as Legacy Residential. The Legacy Residential Medium Classification notes the only appropriate land use is single-family detached residential. It notes the two appropriate districts are R 20 and RS 40. This is maintaining its zoning as RS 40, greater than 40,000 square foot lots. Staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the final plat for 7303 Lake Road to create three single-family detached residential lots and an ingress egress easement for the shared driveway, and install all necessary stormwater, water, and wastewater infrastructure as we submitted on June 12th.
Make a motion to approve PC 2925, that's A.
Second.
Is there anyone that would like to come speak to this item? State your name and address, please.
Good evening, Todd Olson with Anderson Delk Eps, 618 Grass Park, Suite 4, Nashville. Appreciate the staff report. Here to answer any questions you may have.
Questions, comments?
I've got a question for the staff. So is, does this, my understanding, that entire area there was, at one time, or still is, zoned for trailers?
That is correct. RSM 40 allowed for residential, single-family, and manufactured homes to be built within that zone district. It allowed for trailer parks to be part of that multifamily piece of that.
Okay, so this final plat actually has changed, or that was already done?
That zoning will stay in effect. However, the applicant has spoke to separate this into three single-family home lots that they intend to build homes on.
So could they put a trailer in the back of the yard still, or?
They could.
They could.
Just like RS 40 today, you could still have a manufactured home within RS 40 as well.
May I speak? I'm Dave McGowan, Region Homes. We built the homes right across the street and also to the west of this particular parcel. And these basically will be designed to be anywhere from 2,500, 3,500 square foot houses. And we already have three people who would like for us to build a house on those lots. So we're building single-family homes detached.
Thank you.
Thank you. Question for staff, the easement for that single driveway, does it also cover or depict who maintains? Or is it split evenly between the three parcels?
The maintenance and upkeep of that road and easement would be shared amongst the three lots.
Any additional questions? All right, hearing none, let's call a vote, if you will, Ms. Howell, please.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Schilling. Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Ritt.
Aye.
Ms. Shulis.
Aye.
Mr. Pate.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
All right, motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda, item eight F. PC Resolution, PC 3025. Rezoning Old Cox Pike, 53.162 acres, map 43, parcel 51, 52, and 53. Current zoning is RS 40, and the proposed zoning RS 20. Property owner, Marlin Cunningham. Mr. Greer, if you will, read the staff report, please.
Mr. Cunningham has, as owner and applicant, has submitted a request to rezone the entirety of three parcels, tax map 43, parcel 15, tax map 43, parcel 52, and tax map 43, parcel 53. This property was brought in for annexation a while back. It has been annexed into the city of Fairview at the last Board of Commissioners' meeting. The request for this is to go from RS 40, which is what it was brought in as, to R 20. The request was made known during the annexation process, as we spoke about earlier. We will run these at different meetings so that the Planning Commission can provide their proper recommendation and follow our regulations. The parcels to the north are located within Williamson County and zoned MGA 1 and MGA 5. The parcel to the south and west are zoned Williamson County and zoned MGA 5. The properties to the east is the Pine Crest subdivision, and it is all zoned R 20. Two of the properties in the Fairview Forward 2040 Plan are classified as New Residential Medium Neighborhood. This future land use classification notes appropriate land uses as single-family detached residential, single-family attached residential, mixed-use, commercial, office, multifamily residential, and civic institutional. The New Residential Medium Neighborhood lists three zone districts as appropriate. These zone districts are RS 40, R 20 with a planned overlay district, and a new district that would permit traditional neighborhood development or conservation subdivision. The third and final property, tax map 43, parcel 15, is classified as Future Land Use Rural Settlement. Rural Settlement Future Land Use Classification lists two land uses as appropriate and five zone districts as appropriate. The two land uses are agricultural and single-family detached residential. The appropriate zone districts are AR 15, AR 5, RS 40, RSM 40, and R 20 with a conservation development. The requested zone district of R 20 would be in alignment with both the future land use classifications. Additionally, the owner has stated the desire is to create a single-family detached residential subdivision on these properties, which would also be in alignment with both future land use classifications. The applicant stated about utilities, any future development of a residential subdivision on the properties would involve extending existing water and sewer services from the Pine Crest subdivision and improvements to the sewer infrastructure. A letter of availability from Water Authority of Dixon County indicating the availability for water and sewer has been included in their submittal. The applicant gave the following reason for their request. The requested annexation and rezoning to R 20 would allow for future development consisting of a residential subdivision of 20,000 square foot lots. The three properties, 53.162 acres, associated with the annexation and rezoning request are adjacent to the existing R 20 Pine Crest subdivision that is within current Fairview city limits. Staff recommends the Planning Commission provide a favorable recommendation to the Fairview Board of Commissioners to approve this request to rezone all of the properties located for R 20. This rezoning request will be placed on Thursday, September 4th, 2025, Board of Commissioners' meeting agenda for consideration, with the potential for the public hearing and second reading being held at Thursday, October 2nd, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. Outletting a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, is there anyone who would like to come and speak to this item? If you'll state your name and address again, please.
Todd Olson with Anderson Delk Eps, 618 Grassmere Park, Suite 4.
Cunningham, 2020 Garfield Street, Nashville, Tennessee.
Thank you.
Just for a clerical note, who was the second on that motion? Mr. Dawson.
Mr. Greer, question, help me understand, because there was a lot of word salad with all those zoning designations. So the request is RS 20, but the future, the Fairview Forward zoning allows for RS 20 with a pod. Is that right?
That is what is suggested in the 2040 Plan. Fairview Forward, I love alliteration, but it makes it very challenging to do this job sometimes. Fairview Forward 2040 Comprehensive Plan.
Yes, what you said.
Chairman, I've got a quick question. So which one of the parcels has the conservation development?
As the designation?
Yes.
I believe it is the parcel to the northwest corner of this, if I remember correctly. The rural settlement piece is the most northwestern corner of this, and I can give you an exact acreage if you need it.
Yeah, that'd be good. Yeah, how many acres are we talking about?
I think it's roughly 8 or 10% of the total area of the site. It's the smallest parcel in the northwest corner.
Okay. So, Mr. Greer, how do we, how do we, I guess, get through that conservation? I wouldn't think it would meet the 2040 Plan if it specifically states that parcel has the conservation development attached to it, right? If it has to be R 40, and, or it has to have the...
In the Fairview Forward Plan is designated as rural settlement.
Right.
Which has...
R 20 conservation.
R 20 with a conservation development.
Yeah, so what would they have to do, I guess, to meet that requirement?
First question that you asked, acreage, it is 4.47 acres out of the total of...
Fifty-three?
Fifty-three, fifty-three and some change acres. So it is a relatively small portion. To meet that, the conservation subdivision allows for lots to be clustered together with 50% of the land to remain as natural as possible. There are some options that they can utilize within that. They can have detention ponds within the conservation lands. They can have trails within the conservation lands. They can have step systems within the conservation lands. But the land has to remain fairly untouched. That would be for the totality of the site if they were to do a conservation subdivision. For that one four-acre piece, I believe that is mainly for access to Old Cox Pike, based on the topography of this site and needing their connections. The topography to get down to the Dice-Lampley Road frontage is significantly challenging with some slopes to get down there and a farm pond that exists on the property. The frontage along Old Cox Pike is likely where their main access point would be. I believe that was the intention of the applicant when they were acquiring the property, having that frontage along Old Cox. But with that, that four acres, if it was desired by the board to still see that remain as a conserved piece or 50%, two acres of that be conserved, I think Cunningham might be agreeable to look at conserving some of that land.
What say you? It sounds like that is what the designation is of that parcel.
Study done now on that?
Uh, we haven't a hydraulic determination done whether or not there's a drain that goes along that western portion. And that might be why that smaller parcel was designated as that potentially, I don't know. But preliminary findings show that it's more of a weather conveyance rather than any sort of jurisdictional drain. We're still waiting on the finalized report on that and TDEC concurrence. But there are some slopes over in that area, and that might be why it was originally that future land use. Oh, with a small portion of the entire site. It'll all depend on how it all lays out once we get into design. If it's approved.
With that stated, the 2040 Plan is a guideline. It is not a, not a regulatory document. It is a guideline for this board and the Board of Commissioners to utilize. Being four acres in size, it does not match up to, it'd be incongruent with any of the other appropriate zone districts outside of RS 40, which it is currently zoned. So...
And is that RS 40 pretty much borders that, correct? That RS 20 that we're talking about for future growth?
Outside of, to the west of the yellow designation?
Yeah. Do we know what that is?
That would be MGA 5, which is one home per five acres within Williamson County.
Okay.
Chairman, just got a quick question for the staff. Where does the urban growth boundary fall in relative to this site down Old Cox Pike?
The urban growth boundary extends all the way to the Hickman County and Dixon County lines.
I think my only comment to this is, based off of the workshops we had and comments from citizens last year when kind of looking at the future growth of the city, the desire is that from the town center out that we truly are transitioning from high density to low density. From what I see here, we're continuing to annex sites in and then continuing to rezone them to higher densities even at the extents of the city right now. So to me, I think that we lose some of the transition from urban to rural settlement. So, to me, I think that we lose some of the transition from urban to rural settlement areas of our city by continuing to rezone to R20s when, you know, we need some more of that transition to the R40s. So, that's my only comment.
Madam Chairman.
Mr. Pape.
I just have a couple of comments, and it kind of tags on to, to the last comment as well. You know, when you look at the Future Land Use Plan and you have the, you know, it is a guide, and it does say R20 pod, pud, of course, but now it's pods, for the entire site. And I think this is a perfect example of that because you have a large site that's got R20 on one side and five acre, you know, minimum lots on the other. And the whole point of a pud or a pod is to put a master plan together that creates transitional zoning. And you have a great opportunity to do that where you put larger lots on the side where the are, the, the five acre lots are, and you transition down to the smaller lots by R20. So, I think this is an appropriate site for something like that. That's just my input.
Mr. Greer, could that be achieved if they came back and asked for a RS20 pud or pod designation instead of just RS20?
There is a significant amount of work that goes into asking for a R20 or RS, any pud, any pod, pud. There's a significant amount of engineering that goes into that to design it prior to it coming before the board. This is just a request for a straight zone that came along with their annexation. If they were to do, if they were to seek 20,000 square foot lots, they technically today could do a RS40 pod, which allows for 50% lot sizes. So, they could get 20,000 square foot lots doing a RS40 pod today if that was their desire. They came in for straight zoning at, at their request. So, tonight we are to, to evaluate the zoning and provide a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners on if the Planning Commission feels that this should be a R20 site. That is the request. We're not here to change their mind if, we're here to evaluate the, the request that was made. So, R20 is the request. If y'all don't feel that R20 should be appropriate in the, at this site, then please vote accordingly.
Madam Chair.
Mayor.
The property to the east, R20 zone, straight?
Correct.
My comment on this is, you know, R20 is half acre lots. I feel like half acre lots, in my opinion, are not low den, I mean, they're not high density. They're comparable to Castleberry. If we requested for them to do a pod, correct me if I'm wrong, they could do less than R20 with a pod, right? Instead of the straight zone? They could do less...
They could ask for as many variances that they would like.
Yeah, but if they did a pod, they could do, they could do less than the half acre lots.
An R20 pod?
Yes.
Yes, they could go down, be authorized to go down to as low as 10,000 square feet within our regulations and could seek variances for smaller than that.
That's why I'm not in favor of a pod here because if they're asking for half acre lots, I think it matches what's next door. I would not want to go to a pod to see the lots possibly transition from half acre to 10,000 feet. So, that's my opinion. Thank you.
I would like to keep it at the 20,000 square foot, what I'm, what I'm asking for. I think it's reasonable since I actually developed the property next door, Pinecrest. I just feel like it would fit in that area good.
Mr. Greer, I'm sorry. Madam Chairman, can I speak?
Go nuts.
One more time, that conservation area, can they build? Can they put homes on there if they follow the conservation?
If they follow the conservation subdivision, it requires 50% of the land to be used for home sites, 50% of the land to be conserved.
Okay. And there's no way that we can add this, add that into the resolution here? This is just straight R20?
This is a request for straight R20. You're more than welcome to, to add that as a recommendation, part of your recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, as this is a recommendation, so you can add, Planning Commission, whether, however you want to phrase your, your wording, but Planning Commission does not recommend, would prefer to see whatever designation you would like.
Got it. Thank you.
Any further comments or questions? All right, hearing none. Ms. Howe, if you will, call or vote.
Mr. King?
No.
Mr. Dawson?
No.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Mr. Ritt?
No.
Ms. Shulis?
No.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Calley?
No.
Mr. Pape?
No.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Motion fails. Six-three. All right. Next item on the agenda, item eight, uh, gee. PC Resolution, PC 3125, Final Platte, West Hill Subdivision, Phase 1A, formerly Westview, 40.13 acres, MAP 46, Parcel 44, Property Owner Boulevard Building Group LLC. Mr. Greer, if you will, read your staff report, please.
Mr. Biata has submitted a final plat for Phase 1A of the West Hill subdivision, formerly Westview Residential Subdivision, which is located at 7335 Overby Road. West Hill Phase 1A contains 55 single-family detached residential lots on 40.13 acres. It is a part of a pud that was originally approved as the Westview subdivision. West Hill Phase 1A will create four public rights of way, which are all a minimum of 50 foot in width with five-foot sidewalks and a grass strip separating the sidewalk and travel lanes. Fairchild Street will provide access to Overby Road and creates a T-intersection with Brickell Circle, which will become a major north-south roadway within the development. Brickell Circle stubs out to the north and south for access to future phases of the West Hill subdivision. Phase 1A also contains four open spaces with open space in three being the location of a future community activity center. Also, there is an additional open space located along the southern boundary of Phase 1A that will contain the sanitary sewer drip irrigation fields. Phase 1A also contains six stormwater ponds that are distributed throughout the phase. Staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the final plat for West Hill Phase 1A in order to create 55 single-family detached residential lots, four open spaces, sanitary sewer drip irrigation filled open space, six stormwater ponds, four public rights of way, and all necessary water, wastewater, and stormwater infrastructure as resubmitted on August 7th, 2025.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve PC 3125?
Mr. King? All right, is there anyone that would like to come and speak to this item? If you will, state your name and address, please.
Yes, Adam Kronk with Kronk Engineering, 7112 Crossroads Boulevard, Brentwood, Tennessee. Engineer record, happy to answer any questions you may have about it.
Mr. Greer, the open space, Lot 56, it says to be dedicated to the Water Authority of Dixon County. I mean, I see they have a drip irrigation on the back, on the south side of the property. What is that Lot 56 designated for?
That drip irrigation is part of their onsite decentralized wastewater treatment center. That is a place where they will be utilizing drip irrigation, much like every other development out here, water authority, where they have their equipment, they ultimately get dedicated to the land, and they own...
Right, so that's Lot 57. 56 is up by Overby Road. Is there more equipment that will be going up?
That 56 does have drip fields in it as well.
Okay.
I assume since this is, this is part of a pud, that this plat is consistent with the master plan?
Yes, Mr. Pape, it is consistent with the master plan. You recall a few months ago, we observed the Westview, West Hill Phase 1B Development Plan that came in, and with that, they did have an updated phasing plan that was approved. And so, this is consistent with their master development plan and their updated phasing plan of Phase 1A and Phase 1B.
Mr. Greer, is, if over 50 homes, that's one or two community amenities. I think it's two.
I'd have to look back at what was approved in their planned unit development for their master plan. I have not looked back at, this is what was shown in their Phase 1, and that was what was included in our review, but I don't recall exactly what they have for the entirety of the development.
Mayor.
Mr. Greer, at this time, this is one way in and one way out, correct?
That is correct.
And it requires the homes to be sprinkled, correct?
That is not correct. So, during their original approvals with their pud, if you look in the middle of that right-of-way, there is a big median that has multiple options to be able to get around it. The pavement section is wide enough. Fire and life safety approved with their original pud, that they could have one singular point of access onto Overby Road. And utilizing the geometry of this roadway, they would be allowed to not have to sprinkle the homes within this development.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Much like we've seen in some other instances, like the reserves on Chester has one singular point on Chester Road with 42 home sites on that, that developer in communication with the fire department came to an agreement to put a 62-foot right-of-way within there with three lanes of travel so that a fire truck, no matter what, could be able to access throughout the development.
Any further questions? Comments? All right, Ms. Howe, if you will, call a vote.
Mr. Calley?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ritt?
Aye.
Ms. Shulis?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Pape?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
All right, motion passes eight to one. All right, item eight, new business, H, PC Resolution, PC 3225, Final Platte, 7857 and 7859 Crowcut Road, 10.07 acres, MAP 18, Parcel 2604 and 2610. Property owner Paul and Carla Ann Creed. Mr. Greer, if you will, read your staff report.
Call Your Engineering has submitted on behalf of Paul Creed a final plat for 7857 and 7859 Crowcut Road. The lots at 7857 and 7859 Crowcut Road contain 10.07 acres and are currently zoned RS40. Both properties are located on FEMA firm panel 4187C0020F, and no portion of either property is located within a flood hazard area. The proposed subdivision of the property at 7857 and 7859 Crowcut Road is to take a portion of each existing parcel and create a third parcel that fronts onto Crowcut Road. The proposed parcel will contain 2.89 acres. Also, there is an existing gravel driveway and related 25-foot ingress/egress easement that crosses the proposed parcel that will remain. The easement provides access to the property located at 7839 Crowcut Road. The existing parcels for 7857 and 7859 Crowcut Road will maintain road frontage as part of the subdivision and will not require an access easement. All surrounding properties are located within Williamson County and contain single-family residential land uses or are currently vacant. All surrounding properties are zoned Williamson County MGA 1. The Fairview Forward 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates the properties at 7857 and 7859 Crowcut Road as rural settlement. The rural settlement classification notes that only appropriate land uses are agriculture and single-family detached residential. RS40, which is the current zone, is listed as an appropriate zone district. The proposed land use is single-family detached residential. It is in alignment with the Fairview Forward 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the final plat for 7857 and 7859 Crowcut Road to create a single-family detached residential lot from a portion of tax MAP 18, Parcel 26.04, and a portion of tax MAP 18, Parcel 26.10, as resubmitted on July 3rd, 2025.
Make a motion to approve PC 3225?
Calley Schilling? All right, is there anyone who would like to come and speak to this item? If you will, state your name and address, please.
Brandon Creed, 7857 Crowcut Road. We're just trying to build, my brother, who's a 20-year veteran, he's going to be retiring here in February, we'd like to build him a house, and hopefully he can move in at said time.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from the Planning Commission? All right, hearing none. If you will, Ms. Howe, call a vote.
Mr. Calley?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ritt?
Aye.
Ms. Shulis?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Pape?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Motion passes nine-zero. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda, item eight, aye. PC Resolution, PC 3325, Rezoning Fairview, 17 Boone Street, 17.74 acres, MAP 42, Parcel 132. Current zoning is RS40, Proposed Zoning RS8. Property owner Christine Bryson. Mr. Greer, if you will, read the staff report, please.
Mr. Kevin O'Brien with CLQ Land has submitted a request to rezone the entire 17.74 acre parcel located on the north side of Boone Street, east of Highway 100. The property is currently zoned RS40. The requested zone is RS8. All surrounding properties are located within the Fairview Municipal boundaries. The properties to the north are zoned commercial general, while the property to the south and west are zoned RS40. The property to the east is zoned R20. The property to the east is vacant, while the properties to the south and west contain existing single-family detached... existing single-family detached residences. The property to the north is currently vacant and has been approved for townhouse development. The 2040 Fairview Forward Plan classifies this property as residential transition, which lists appropriate zoning districts as RS 15, RS 8, RS 5, and RM 8 with a PUD, or a new district that includes design standards to achieve the intent of the policy. The appropriate land uses are listed as multifamily residential, single-family attached residential, single-family detached residential, and civic institutional. The applicant provided the following reason for the rezoning request, to be aligned with the city's future land use plan designating the site residential transition, allowing three to seven dwelling units per acre. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission provide a favorable recommendation to the Fairview Board of Commissioners to approve this rezone. This request to rezon all 17.74 acres of property located on the north side of Boone Street, east of Highway 100, identified as Tax MAP 042 parcel 132.00, from the current zoning of RS 40 to RS 8, with the following conditions of approval included in Resolution PC 3325. This rezoning request will be placed on Thursday, September 4th, Board of Commissioner meeting agenda for consideration with the potential for the public hearing and a second reading being held on Thursday, October 2nd, Board of Commissioners meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
McDonald.
Second.
Mayor Anderson. Is there someone who would like to come and speak to this item? If you will, state your name and address, please.
Good evening, appreciate you guys' time tonight. My name's Kevin O'Brien with CLQ Development, address is 6700 Tower Circle Franklin, 37067. So, to respect your time, I don't want to go over a ton more than Ethan went over, but we are here tonight looking for a RS 8 rezone on our 17-acre site here, right across from town center. We believe we are in line with the 2040 Future Vision Plan, and we believe that the RS 8 rezone allows us to do our single-family development here without the need for any variance requests. So we would appreciate your consideration, and I'd love to answer any questions or concerns you might have.
I know this is just a rezone. Do you have an idea of how many units, at this point, you want to put on there?
We do. We actually evaluated this for RS 5 at first, which would have yielded probably 60, 61 lots. But just listening to the feedback and what we thought would be a better product to fit the site is why we went with RS 8, which probably cuts us down to the 38 range, plus or minus four.
Madam Chair.
Mayor.
I appreciate you listening to the feedback and increasing your, from RS 5 to RS 8. And I'm excited that it's single-family homes. I think we're a little townhome-heavy. So I think, you know, single-family homes in that area, to give a good mix is a good product. 38, that's a good number, down from the 60 that you were asking for. So I believe this is a good product for this area. Thank you.
Mr. Greer, assuming based on location, that Water Authority has allowed us sewer and water at this location, is there a maximum number of taps that they have put on this property?
Yeah, I know that too, Ethan, if you want me to jump in. We had been approved for 60 when we were contemplating RS 5, due to the site constraints. You know, at RS 8, we think it's highly infeasible, we would get that. Ethan, there is kind of a slide to this question, Mr. Greer, if you don't mind, just popping down. Probably two more ahead of this. Bree? Yeah, right there. When we did some preliminary studies here, you can see in the purple section at the bottom, not only are there streams that lead to an actual blue line that will include a floodplain, we also discovered a cemetery, which leaves us really seven net developable acres at the Fairview allowable density of 5.4. That's how we come up with our 38. So though we do have sewer capacity for 60 when we had contemplated the RS 5, the site constraints just won't allow us to get there.
Any additional comments, questions from the Planning Commission? Hearing none. Ms. Howell, if you will, call a vote.
Mr. Callie.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Ms. Schilling.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Ritt.
Aye.
Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Pape.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you all so much for your consideration and approval.
Moving on to item nine, reports for discussion and information. City planning staff.
Bree, if you would, go to the next slide, please. Tomorrow night, we have our public draft being released from TPUDC, Town Planning and Urban Design Collaborative. They are our selected author of our new development code. They issued a client draft a while back, and our Development Code Committee reviewed that draft, and we've sent them back several corrections of things that we would like to see, some issues that we wanted to correct in the document. And then tomorrow night, they will be unveiling the public draft. All of you are invited, please come on out, and that's 6 o'clock on a Wednesday. I know it's not the most great time for a Wednesday night. My, it was the only available date that we had to pick, so Wednesday was what it was going to have to be. For tomorrow night, they will be going over how to utilize the document, how to understand the document. It is a completely different way of thinking about land use and zoning from our traditional zoning ordinance. If you've read through our zoning ordinance today, as one person once said, this is like going from kindergarten to college, with understanding of zoning. Our zoning ordinance today is very rudimentary and does not have many regulations or design form, character pieces to it. This is jam-packed with all kinds of new fun stuff for us to explore. So, come out tomorrow night, 6 o'clock. Planning Commission, y'all are welcome to come and ask questions. We will be evaluating this. We'll have a work session prior to the next Planning Commission meeting, which is September 9th. We'll have a work session prior to that meeting to review the public draft. After the draft comes out tomorrow, there will be a 30-day review window for citizens and Planning Commission members and everyone to enter comments into our office for review. That will close on September 13th. After that, we plan to have this to the Planning Commission for a vote at the October meeting, at the latest, at the November Planning Commission meeting. So as it comes out, it is a lengthy document, it's about 460 pages long. It will be available as a PDF download on the City of Fairview's website. Please feel free to download it, scan it, search the words "Planning Commission," find out what all kind of fun rules and regulations you, as the Planning Commission, can impose that we, as staff, cannot. It would be very beneficial for you to know that. And so as you're digging through, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to myself, Mr. Ritt, Mr. Dawson, the couple new members up here. To my left is our consultant planner, Mr. Kevin Chastain with Griggs and Maloney Engineering. And then we have Mr. Curtis Broadbent, our consultant engineer with Griggs and Maloney. We also have another staff member with Griggs and Maloney, Mr. Will Owen, who oversees Curtis and his engineering work, and has been heavily involved in the City of Fairview over the past decade, 15 years or so, as a consultant to the city. Has quite a bit of knowledge of how the City of Fairview and our infrastructure was constructed throughout the history, which has been very beneficial to us as a younger staff, being in here for only a couple of years. Mr. Dawson and Mr. Ritt, I hope you enjoyed your first Planning Commission meeting. I look forward to working with you a long time, and so I will turn it over to City Manager for anything you might have.
Before you do, what time is our work sessions, to start at 6? Is that TBD?
It's to be determined. I would love to hear from you after you take a look at the document and think if we need an hour to talk about it, or if you think we need two hours to talk about it.
Fair enough.
We will have...
If there's pizza, I'll be here at 5:00.
We will likely have a work session prior to the September meeting to get comments from you all, and be able to have y'all discuss an item that you'll be voting, so it has to be a public meeting. And then we will likely have another work session prior to the October meeting to go through any corrective items that were made.
Gotcha. All right. Sorry, City Manager.
Thank you. I just wanted to welcome Mr. Ritt and Mr. Dawson, look forward to your serving the city. Also want to tell you that Finance Director Ben Knox will be reaching out to you to get you onboarded, and just welcome.
City Engineer.
Welcome to the new Planning Commission members. Look forward to your questions. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. City Attorney.
Just one note on the new draft. Mr. Carter and I both read that a couple of months ago, provided our feedback, a lot less than planning staff, but if you have questions, we'd be happy to address it. Our recommendation would be to funnel everything through Mr. Greer. That way, we're being consistent with our opinions. We're not giving you different sides of the same issue, so please funnel through him. He's very good about if it has a legal implication, getting us involved.
Yeah, I'll take over Mr. Darty's finance hat for a minute. Funnel everything through me, I will review it, and then I will compile one list to send to our attorneys, so that we get one bill instead of nine bills, please. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Planning Commission Roundtable, I'll start at the very end here with Mr. Pape.
Thank you, welcome to the new members. Glad to have you guys on board. I highly encourage everybody to show up tomorrow night for the draft. I'm disappointed that I will not make it due to a prior commitment, but I'm looking forward to reading the new draft. Thank you, everybody.
Mr. McDonald.
Welcome to the new members, and yeah, hope to see a good crowd tomorrow night. That's all.
Mr. Callie.
Thanks to the staff, putting it all together, it was a big packet. Welcome to the new members, and congratulations to the new officers.
Mr. Ritt.
Well, say thank you for allowing me to serve. Looking forward to learning.
Mr. King.
I'd just like to say welcome to everybody, and say I'm very excited to see what everybody's hard work, all the staff and the consultants, put together, and yeah, looking forward to what that's going to do for our community.
Mr. Dawson.
Yeah, wanted to thank the community and the VOC for appointing me to this position. It is such an honor to serve the City of Fairview. And also looking forward to that public draft of the new development codes. That is, of course, our holy bible for the Planning Commission, right? And super excited to have a new set of codes. We've certainly needed that for a long time, so we're finally stepping it up here in the City of Fairview. Thank you.
Ms. Schilling. All right, Mayor Anderson.
I want to welcome Mr. Ritt, Mr. Dawson, to the Planning Commission. Excited that Ms. Shulist is our new chairman. We've served on the Planning Commission for many years, and she is always thorough and does a great job, so I appreciate her and Mr. Pape as Vice Chairman. I want to say thank you to the planning staff and everyone at Griggs and Maloney for all their hard work on our zoning, new zoning ordinance that we're going to be reviewing. It's been a large undertaking, and I'm excited to see it come to fruition. So also, I want to just encourage anyone from the community, if you watched our board meeting, we had three renditions of what our "Welcome to Fairview" signs will be. So we want your vote on which one that you choose. So I hope the community will come out, and we're going to have the three options for everyone to vote on. They will be here tomorrow night, you can vote tomorrow night, you can vote on Saturday when we have our strategic planning session here bright and early at 8:00 a.m. So yeah, you'll be here at 8:00 a.m. on Saturday. And, let's see. I served with Mr. Eddie Arnie on our several boards, and he was a commissioner out here at one time, and I just want to extend my thoughts and prayers to his family in the loss of his son, Brandon Arnie. Their family has meant a lot to this community, and I just am very sad that they've lost their son, Brandon, and I just want to extend my thoughts and prayers to that family. Thank you.
Finally, I am honored that you all put your faith in me as your chair, and I believe Mr. Pape will make a great vice chair. Hopefully, he doesn't have to be called on for his services. But thank you to the staff for all your hard work, and this new agenda, way of receiving the agenda is great. I assume we're no longer using IDT to log in and look at anything?
Let me give a quick update on that. So the, I'd be remiss, did anyone have any issues with the agenda in viewing the attachments? Mr. Callie has spoke with me, we're going to get him with IT. His iPad wouldn't open any of the PDFs for some reason. Did anyone have any issues viewing it? Perfect. So, we have switched over from IDT to GovWell. You, as a board and board members, do not have any reason to log into that. We will be putting all documents that you need as attachments on the agenda. One, for a clearer process for us to make sure that you have all of the correct documents. Sometimes it gets a little funky with multiple submittals and making sure you're looking in the right folder and looking at the most current documents. So we're able to put the most current, correct documents on the agenda. Two, it allows for the public to view all development plans, all PUD plans, all rezoning requests, everything that comes in will be available on the city's website within the agenda as PDF. So if any citizen, Vice Mayor, Mayor, any of the Planning Commissioners, as you speak with citizens that want to see something, if you have an iPad or a phone, you can pull it up on the city's website at any point to look at, hey, this development plan, this is what they submitted to the city. Nothing is hidden, it's all a very transparent process. It's our goal in our department is to be as transparent as possible, and to make sure that everybody has as much information as possible to make the correct decision. With that said, I'm hoping that it cuts down on some records requests, since we'll have a lot more public information out there with our agendas, and not having citizens having to request development plans to find out what's going on in their backyard. So, y'all, we're all good, and Mr. Callie will get you taken care of, and then we will be moving in that direction for all of our agendas, Board of Commissioners, Board of Zoning Appeals, Planning Commission, Beer Board, will all be within the same agenda format moving forward. And the minutes will also be done within the same platform as well.
Thank you. That's all I have. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.